Hi Marnie, it's David Fink. I'm on the call.
Hi David, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I'm gonna mute myself now.
Okay. Still missing two members of the committee. We're just gonna give it a-
Did Esther get instructions on how to link in? She did?
She did, yeah. I do see that it's 4 o'clock, but we'll give it a few more minutes.
Right.
For board members, Pomeroy and Goodhue.
We don't have a quorum yet. I understand Brandon is on vacation.
He is. I well deserved one at that.
Yes. Said he was going somewhere where he would never get any messages.
That was divine.
Otherwise, he'd probably be working full-time.
Right. Hi Eric.
Marnie.
We're just waiting for a couple more board members before we get started.
Okay.
There's Kathy.
Hi Kathy.
I wonder if Esther's having trouble getting on.
I just always have a hard time finding that link.
I put a flag on it, which helps. Then I look for the flag.
I thought I did too, but I couldn't find it.
Yeah.
Just wanna let you folks know that Sullivan is on the phone with Board Member Goodhue, doing some troubleshooting, helping her get online here.
Great, thank you Leo.
Well, home of teachers to be the highest paid in the region, looks forward-
So for anyone that may be watching online or just joining us, we're just waiting for one more board member to log on, and then we will start the meeting.
Perhaps she could just connect by phone if, there she is. No, that isn't her. Connect by phone if she can't get a picture, zoom.
Should just be another minute or two.
Okay.
Hi Esther, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, wonderful. Alright, well it is 4:07, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Historic Resources Board, and today is Monday, September 19th. Can we have roll call, please?
Board Member Croman.
Here.
Board Member Goodhue.
Yes.
Board Member Hall.
Here.
Board Member Pomeroy.
Here.
Great, thank you Leo. So our first order of business is to appoint a Chair and a Vice Chair for the Board. So we'll begin with the appointment of the Chair. Board members can make nominations. And then when a motion is made and seconded, you'll vote on who the Chair of the Board will be. The Chair will take the proverbial seat, and then we'll do the same thing for the Vice Chair. So do we have any nominations?
I'll nominate Jordan Croman as Chair.
I'll nominate Carol as Vice Chair.
Okay, Kathy, do you wanna make a motion on the Chair first?
I make a motion that Board Member Croman be nominated as Chair.
Okay. Leo, can we get a roll call?
I second.
Oh.
Oh.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, so this will be a roll call for the Chair. Board Member Croman.
Yes.
Board Member Goodhue.
Yes.
Board Member Hall.
Yes.
Board Member Pomeroy.
Yes.
Okay, and I heard a nomination for Board Member Hall as the Vice Chair. Do we have any other nominations? Does anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we nominate Board Member Hall as Vice Chair.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Alright, roll call, please.
Board Member Croman.
Yes.
Board Member Goodhue.
Yes.
Board Member Hall.
Yes.
Board Member Pomeroy.
Yes.
Wonderful, well congratulations Chair and Vice Chair. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Board Member Croman, to lead the next part of the meeting.
Okay, now the frying pan into the fire. Alright, so we'll start with the adoption of the minutes. Can we have a review of the minutes, please?
So let's, first, let's do public appearances.
Oh, sorry, public appearances. Are there any of the members of the public that would like to speak on anything that's not currently in the agenda?
It'll come up. I guess, what's the thing, I just have to have it covered here.
I don't know.
I'm sorry.
I don't know.
I wanted to say one thing if I could.
Go ahead, Eric.
Thank you. First of all, I wanna congratulate Chair Croman and Vice Chair Hall on taking over the Board. I know it's just a little bit, feels a little different today than usual. And I just wanted to thank, you know, all my former colleagues, Jordan and Carol and Kathy, for their hard-working commitment to the historic character and resources. And I also wanted to thank, you know, the staff, Marnie and Brandon and Evan and Catherine and Suray and Leah. It's just been a pleasure working with all of you for that many years, and it's been a pleasure serving the city of Carmel this long, and I know I left it in good hands. And I wanna take the opportunity also to congratulate Board Member Goodhue for joining the Board. I'm sure she'll be great. And just good luck to you all, and I'm here and happy to help anyone who can with the city and HR people.
Thanks Eric. Is there anyone else wishing to make an announcement? Okay. If there's no more, no other members of the public, let's go to announcements.
I just wanted to say thank you to Eric and to Catherine Gualtieri as well for their many, many years of service on this Board, and we will miss you dearly. So, thank you so much. And when is it appropriate, is it under orders of business that we vote on in-person meetings at City Hall?
Yeah, I would think so. Future agenda items, maybe after the public hearings, or during the Director's Report?
Yeah, we can certainly have that discussion under future agenda items.
Okay.
I have one more announcement if I could.
Please.
I just wanted to, hopefully everyone has heard about the Carmel Heritage Society Home Tour, sponsored by Carmel Heritage and AIA Monterey Bay, and it's happening on Saturday, the 25th. And it's gonna be great. There's a lot of historic homes and some new homes. And please go to carmelheritage.org, I think is the website, or aiamontereybay.org, and they'll give you the links to buy tickets. So it's from 1 to 5, and there's a reception afterward for people who bought tickets to the whole thing. I think there's seven homes on the tour this year.
And Eric, what day was that?
It was Saturday, I think that's the 25th. Let me verify that.
How are you? Hi.
I'm sorry, my correction, thanks for, it's Saturday, the 24th. Coming up this Saturday.
Great. And I would just join Carol by thanking Eric and Catherine for being great team members and being great leaders in the Historic Resource Board, certainly teaching us a lot about what ride looked like. So thanks for that.
And then if I may, just real quickly, Chair, for the benefit of the public, I do wanna welcome Board Member Esther Goodhue to the Historic Resources Board. She is joining us today. This is her first meeting, so welcome Esther. We're certainly glad to have you.
And we're still looking for an architect, right?
Correct, we still have one vacancy to fill.
Great. Okay, so let's go to the consent agenda, the adoption of the minutes from August 15th. Has everybody seen, everybody seen the minutes that were included in our packet?
Yeah. I moved to approve the minutes of August 15th, 2022, at our regular meeting, as stand.
I'll second that.
So can we have a vote?
Board Member Croman.
Okay.
Can you hear me? I'm gonna, I'm gonna, okay, I'm gonna start over on the roll call to adopt the minutes.
Okay.
So Chair Croman.
The Board members will need to unmute themselves. Okay, we might still be having some technical difficulties, so just bear with us for a moment.
Okay, I think we're back on.
I'm manually unmuting here. Okay, here we go. I just need Board Member Goodhue to unmute. There we go. And then Chair Croman, if you could unmute as well, there we go. Okay, so roll call, Board Member Goodhue.
I believe I should abstain. I wasn't at the meeting.
Correct. Board Member Hall.
Yes.
Board Member Pomeroy.
Yes.
Chair Croman.
Yes.
Hey Chair Croman, do you wanna lead us into public hearings?
Yeah, so let's go into public hearings. The first item of consideration is DS 22-113 Johnson.
Should leave it, we're okay.
Whoever's hosting the meeting, can you please give permission to screen share? Thank you. Thank you Chair. Okay, so the subject residence is known as the Dr. Emma Pope House. The house is in the minimal traditional style, which is recognized as significant in the historic context statement. The house was designed by Julia Morgan, who is a noted architect. She is California's first licensed female architect, who designed nearly 800 buildings, ranging from small, single-family residences up to the famed Hearst Castle. The character-defining features of the property include the low-pitched side gabled roof, the shed roof over the front entrance, exterior brick chimney, the angled bay window on the front elevation, and the original fenestration throughout. The property is historically significant under California Register Criteria III, architecture as the only known building in Carmel designed by Julia Morgan. So in terms of the property, this uncolored portion of the building is the original home built in the 1940s. The garage was a 1960s addition. And this red area in the rear was an addition done in 2011, 2012, which replaced an addition that was also done in the 1960s. There's a small addition back here. And then the scope of work that we'll be reviewing today is an addition that connects the 2011, 2012 addition to the garage, as well as some new skylights in the rear. This is just a comparison of the two elevations. The top is the existing condition. The bottom elevation is the proposed. So it's being considered as a 72-square-foot bathroom addition, connecting the garage to the main residence, a new composition shingle roof to match the existing roof, two new skylights at the rear of the 2011, 2012 addition, a new garage door, and then board and batten siding in the area of addition. So May Clovis prepared a Phase 2 evaluation for the subject project and found that Standards 1, 2, 9, and 10 of the Circuitary of Interior standards are applicable to the project. I apologize for the heading of the slide, that is not correct. But these standards are applicable to this project. Ms. Clovis also found that the project as proposed is consistent with these standards, and gave no recommendations or suggested changes in order to adhere to these standards. So Standard 1, a property will be used as it was historically. The Pope House has been a single-family residence since it was constructed in 1940. The proposed project does not change the historic use. Standard 2, the historic character of a property will be retained and preserved. The removal of distinctive materials or alterations of the feature spaces and spaces and spatial relationships that characterize the property will be avoided. The Phase 2 responds by saying that the bathroom addition will be located between the 2012 bedroom addition and the west elevation of the garage. No distinctive materials that characterize the historic house will be removed. The spatial relationships will not be impacted, as evidenced by the story poles, which are barely visible from the street, and the proposed work is consistent with Standard 2. Standard 9 states that new additions, exterior alterations, or related new construction will not destroy historic materials, features, and spatial relationships that characterize the property, and new work shall be differentiated from the old and will be compatible with the historic materials, features, size, scale, and proportions, enassing to protect the integrity of the property. The project will infill a narrow walkway between the garage and the 2012 addition with a 72-square-foot bathroom. This work will not impact or destroy any character-defining features of the historic house, and it will be barely visible from the public right of way. Board and batten siding will be used to differentiate the addition from the historic section of the house, which has horizontal wood siding. And the proposed work is consistent with Standard 9. And Standard 10, the new addition and adjacent or related new construction will be undertaken in such a manner that if removed in the future, the essential form and integrity of the historic property and its environment would be unimpaired. The Phase 2 evaluation concludes saying that since the addition is not connected to the historic portion of the house, its future removal will not impact the essential form and integrity. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the Historic Resources Board adopt a resolution issuing a determination of consistency with the Secretary of Interior standards. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions for the staff? I have one question. I know it's gonna be attached to the nonhistoric portion, but is the, is the board and batten siding of the new addition gonna match the previous, the previous addition?
So my understanding is it will match the 2012 addition, which you can see right here.
Yeah.
So it'll essentially be a continuation of this.
Got it. Does anybody else have any other questions for Evan? If not, we'll open it to the public for comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment?
I'll take the first stab at it. Chair Croman.
Go ahead.
So yes, I'm Eric Dyer, architect, and I was the architect back in 2012 for that addition where we had this really poorly-done 1960s addition in the back that wasn't working well with the amazing Julia Morgan cottage. And we took that down and built something much more complimentary. And with this, the clients wanted to make their house a little bit more functional when their children come from out of town, they're older couple now. And so I agreed to help them, and I think we integrated it really well, completely apart from the historic resource itself, and integrated it well into the 2012 addition and the garage. And it's just very small, it can be barely seen from the street if at all. And I think it's a, as you can see from the Phase 2 evaluation from May Clovis, I think it was, it does meet all the Secretary of Interior standards. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And just in response to Jordan, your question, it is the, it'll match the siding of the 2012 addition, correct?
Thanks. Any questions for Eric? Okay, if there are no questions, then we'll close the public portion and bring it back to the Board. Is there any discussion by the Board, or anyone who wanna make a motion on this?
I will make a motion. DS 22-113 Johnson Residence, consideration of a determination of consistency for a 72-square-foot bathroom addition. And the existing, let's see, the Dr. Emma Pope House. And I recommend that we approve it as stated.
Okay, so there's been a, is there a second to Carol's motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a first and second. Can we have a vote, please?
Board Member Goodhue. Board Member Goodhue, can you unmute yourself?
Yes.
Yes.
Board Member Hall?
Yes.
Board Member Pomeroy?
Yes.
Chair Croman.
All right. So let's go to the next. Thanks, Eric. Let's go to the next item of consideration, DR 22-280 Carmel Beach Hotel and Spa. Can we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Croman. You give me just a second here to share my screen.
Thank you. So, Marnie. Interrupt you and everybody.
Just as a reminder, if you're not speaking, if you can mute, that'd help with the background noise, please.
And I apologize. I think we're in a shared office here, so. All right. So the application before you is a design review for the Carmel Beach Hotel and Spa. This is formerly known as the Historic Colonial Terrace Inn. So in August of 2021, the board adopted a determination of consistency for an extensive interior and exterior remodel of the hotel. In September of 2021, the Planning Commission approved the design review application. The remodel includes replacing all windows and doors, some minor modifications to window and door openings, repainting of all the buildings, site accessibility improvements, as well as landscape modifications. And as you saw today on the tour of inspection, the project is well underway, under construction. So the applicant is proposing the addition of second-floor balconies on the west elevations of Buildings A and C. Building A is the yellow star highest up on the page, and then Building C is below that. So the addition of new balconies is considered a major alteration. There currently are no balconies on either of these buildings. And major alterations require review by a qualified professional. So staff worked with Meg Clovis to prepare the Phase 2 report for this project. Meg found that Building A has been substantially altered and does not contribute to the architectural significance of the hotel. Therefore, she did not further evaluate the balcony on Building A. She also found that adding balconies to Building C is consistent with the secretary's standards if the balustrades are differentiated from the stairway balustrades. So starting with Building A, on the left, you can see a photo from 1963. This building was originally constructed in the Spanish style. It had a barrel tile roof, stucco siding, and a very different railing design than what is out there today, which is, on the right-hand side of the screen, is a photo of the existing condition with the project currently under construction. So originally, many of these buildings were designed as single-family residences, and then later came together as a cohesive hotel property. But due to the fact that Building A was originally a Spanish style, it does not contribute to the architectural character of the hotel. And therefore, Meg found that the addition of the balcony would not need to be evaluated for consistency with the secretary's standards. Staff wanted to go ahead and show the board this alteration. So here you can see the existing and proposed alter elevations. Existing is on top. This is the west elevation, which faces Carmel Bay. And you can see there's a single balcony proposed at the upper floor. So with regards to Building C, the applicant is proposing two balconies. The balconies would be symmetrical on the west elevation of this building. This is the rear elevation, also referred to as a secondary elevation. And so modifications on secondary elevations are generally found consistent with the secretary's standards. Meg is recommending that the design of the balustrades for the balcony be differentiated from the railing at the front of this particular building. So on the left-hand side, you can see what the existing railing design is. On the right-hand side is a detail of a proposed design that the applicant has presented. And as you can see, the form of the rails are somewhat similar, but how the railing is constructed or assembled is much different. So there's a subtle differentiation while still maintaining some compatibility with the existing stairway railing. And with that, staff is recommending that the board adopt a resolution issuing the determination of consistency for the addition of the second-floor balconies. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks very much for that, Marnie. Any questions by the board for Marnie? No questions? Okay, so we'll open up the public portion. Are any members of the public interested in asking or making any statements, or does the owner's representative have any statements they want to make?
Chair Croman, it's David Fink, if you can hear me.
Hi, David. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. And I am out of the country for this meeting, but I thought it was really important that I call in, and I just wanted to thank Marnie and Brandon for all the help they've done on our project, which is, as you can see, is coming along very well. As members of the board know, we already have several existing ocean-facing decks, and there is evidence on Building A that there was a balcony or some type of facade on the front of that building, and obviously Meg has determined that it's been substantially altered. On Building C, we'd really like to have these balconies on those top rooms because it would not only add a tremendous amount of value when we sell the room, but give a really nice amenity for our guests. And we have differentiated the balusters as she's requested, and we think it would be consistent with the rest of the design. We're, I have a history in Carmel of restoring historic buildings, as you know, with La Berge Carmel. And I believe that the board will be very happy with their finished product. And Matt Heidel, our architect of record, is also on the call if you have any questions for him about the design. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, David. Anyone else wishing to speak or board, any questions for Mr. Fink or anyone associated with the property? Okay. So we'll close the public portion of this project, then. Any further discussion by members of the board, or is there anybody who want to make a motion?
I can make a motion regarding DR 22-280, the Carmel Beach Hotel and Spa, that the balconies on Building C are consistent with the secretary's standards. And that includes Building A, even though that's not really being considered at this point. And I recommend approval.
So, so Marnie, should we just keep it to Building C, since that's the one under consideration?
So I included Building A in your resolution because the use of the building as a hotel is still part of the historic fabric. So the resolution does include both because the, you know, the whole of the building is still part of the historic resource.
Okay, perfect. So thanks, Carol. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Kathy. Can we have a vote, please?
Board Member Goodhue? Board Member Goodhue, if you could unmute yourself, please?
Yes.
Board Member Hall?
Yes.
Board Member Pomeroy?
Yes.
Chair Croman?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you, board. I appreciate it.
Thank you, David. All right, can we have the director's report, please?
Yeah, so I have a couple items to report on this month. So first, I'm going to start with the historic context statement. So we're really happy to share with the board that the Office of Historic Preservation has approved Phase 1 of our context statement update. As part of our grant requirements, we are collecting volunteer time sheets. And so we're going to be sending those over to the board this evening for you. If you could please complete those and email them back to us. That would be great. Again, it's part of our grant requirements that we're trying to fulfill. And then also, originally, we had talked about deferring, taking this Phase 1 update to Planning Commission and City Council, and we were going to roll right into a Phase 2 of the project. We have decided that we're going to apply for some additional grant funding. And so we're probably going to start Phase 2 a little bit later than we had originally anticipated. So in light of that, we are going to take the Phase 1 to Planning Commission and then on to City Council for acceptance, and that will allow us to start using the document. And then again, with regards to Phase 2, we are going to be seeking some additional grant funding, and we do hope to kick off that phase next year in 2023. Also, just wanted to mention to the board that we do have some capital improvement projects that we are working on. So over at the Sunset Center Classrooms, number 16 and 18, the city's going to be doing some window repair and replacement of those buildings. We also have some exterior painting that's going to be done at the Sunset Center Auditorium. And then the Harrison Memorial Library is also scheduled for some exterior painting maintenance, as well as some interior upgrades, which will be overseen by our library director. And then lastly, a new backup generator for the Harrison Memorial Library is also proposed to be installed. So both Planning and Public Works will be collaborating on these projects as all of these buildings are listed historic resources. So just wanted to let the board know about those activities. And then last, we are kind of coming up quickly on the end of the year. And so in November, we're going to be discussing our meeting calendar for 2023. And as some of you know, we always have a conflict in January and February due to city holidays. So I just ask that you kind of take a look at your calendar and start thinking about your availability, and staff will return in November with a draft calendar for your consideration. And those are all the updates I have.
Thanks, Marnie. Can you just share with us on the historic context statement, contact statement Phase 2? How long of a process is that?
So we're still, we're still working on kind of scoping out that project. So I don't know at this time, I don't know how long that's going to take. It is a significant effort because we do want to overhaul the entire document. We got some great feedback from the subcommittee, as well as some members of the public. And we're really excited just to refresh the entire document. So it will take some time, but we don't, we don't have a schedule put together right now. I certainly will share that with the board as soon as we have something prepared.
Thanks. Okay. Any future agenda items? Carol, you had mentioned one, I think.
Yes, whether we can meet in person at the next meeting and thereafter, hopefully, rather than on Zoom, or I should say in hybrid, so that some people are on Zoom if they need to be, but otherwise, we would be meeting at City Hall.
Don't do anything that's going to make it not work. Don't do that.
That wasn't, I hope, in relation to what I just said.
I can't, please.
So, yeah, so Board Member Goodhue, you are now sharing your screen.
Maybe we can just, yeah, there we go.
There we go. Okay. So staff can certainly put that, if the majority of the board would like to discuss this at the next meeting, staff can certainly agendize that. Is there, is there interest from the other board members for us to consider doing a hybrid meeting?
Kathy, you have any comments, or Esther?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Esther, are you willing to meet in person or do a hybrid version?
I'm willing to meet in person.
Great, as am I. So maybe we can add that as a request?
Request received.
Great. And then do we just request that, Marnie, and then we go from there, or is that, is that something we need to be more formalized on?
Well, there will be some logistics involved. So I would just ask for a little bit of patience. I'll see what I can do to get a hybrid meeting set up for next month's meeting. But we may, we may need some time to implement that. So at the latest, it would be November, but we'll certainly work on getting that set up for October.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any other future agenda items that anyone wants to discuss?
Just maybe a reminder that October 3 is the Design Guidelines Workshop at Carpenter Hall from when is it? Five to eight, five to eight.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I overlooked that one. This particular workshop is going to be open to all appointed board members and commissioners, so everyone is welcome to join us either in person or on Zoom.
Also, I think an email went out to board members and board and commission members about the Halloween Parade on Monday, the 31st at 4:00 p.m. They were looking for members of boards and commissions to participate in that. I know we usually have a mix showing on that, but I just want to remind members of this board that if you're available on the 31st, and that's something that you'd be interested in doing, participating in that. Unfortunately, I will be out of the country, but that would be a neat thing for our board to have some showing in as well. Any other items that anybody wants to talk about?
There's going to be, the CRA is putting on, on the 21st, which is this Wednesday, from 7:00 to 8:30, is it, at the Women's Club, a forum for candidates for City Council, if anybody's interested in that.
Great. Okay, so it looks like our next regular meeting is scheduled for October 17. Marnie, do you have anything before we adjourn?
No, just well done, taking the reins as the chair this afternoon. Thank you so much.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, thank you very much for participating. This was a lot easier meeting than last month's meeting where we seem to go on forever. So thanks and appreciate your participation. seem to go on forever. So thanks, and appreciate your participation. Have a great afternoon.
See you next month.
Take care.